Thank you. I am pleased to inform you that at 7:09 we have a quorum. And we are ready to resume the business of the somewhat raucous at this moment 2014 Annual Town Meeting. A few notes to remind us from last evening that there is absolutely no smoking allowed anywhere in the building. And invite you to please take a moment to locate the emergency exit that is nearest to you. Again, I remind you to take this time to turn off all your cell phones, your pagers, and please refrain from using telephones or texting absent an emergency for another compelling reason. I remind you again that on this Saturday, May the 3rd, we will have the Hingham Town Election. The details concerning the election are set forth on page 62 of your warrant booklet and are also posted on the town's website. Voting begins at 8:00 in the morning and continues until 8:00 in the evening. And again, if it is inconvenient for you or you are unable to vote during the normal polling hours on Saturday, May 3rd, you are welcome and encouraged to come to Town Hall prior to the 3rd, and you will be able to vote during regular business hours at the Town Clerk's Office up to Friday at noon time on May the 2nd. I again call your attention to the Talent Bank Application Form that is set forth on page 81 in the warrant booklet. We encourage and welcome volunteers for service on the many appointed town committees and boards. It's a wonderful opportunity to give service to the town and to become involved in the administration and management of our community. And the selectmen and the moderator invite you to give service to the town. We have open sessions in May and June. They'll be well-publicized. We're all mindful of how we do our voting. First instance, voice vote. If I am in doubt as to results, or if seven voters should rise and express doubt, we then proceed to a standing vote. Except a ballot vote will be taken in lieu of a standing vote if either advisory or 50 voters promptly call for a ballot vote. Ballot votes, of course, take considerable time, and our practice has been not to request a ballot vote in the absence of compelling reasons to do so. I remind you again of our time limits on speaking. Six minutes for the first time and three minutes for the second time. On a fairly light note, I am holding up a stopwatch. This stopwatch was entrusted to me by my predecessor, Mr. O'Donnell. And last night, it failed. Or so I thought. Now fortunately, my wife and I had our trusty iPhones, which have, each of which has a stopwatch feature. But I felt that this was a critical part of Hingham Town Meeting. So I went today to the jeweler's building. And a watchmaker took it out of my hands, wound it, and handed it back. He said, "It works now." Now you think that Mr. O'Donnell would have told me that in an era of electronic balloting, he had given me a mechanical stopwatch that needed to be wound. If you desire to speak, please rise and seek my attention. And you will do so mindful that the stopwatch now works. Having been professionally wound. Before we begin, I'd also like to make note of one of our committee's activities. And that's one of the funnest, to make up a word, committees that we have here in town. The July 4th Parade Committee. They are having a fundraiser on Friday night, May the 2nd, from 7:30 until 10:30 at Black Rock. It looks to be a lovely event supporting the parade. And the details are all set forth on the town's website. It will be good preparation for the election at 8:00 the following morning. So we've dropped off last night at Article 21, and we'll begin with Article 22. Article 22 is one of a sequence of zoning articles. Zoning articles require for passage a two-thirds majority. And Article 22 asks whether the town will amend the zoning bylaw of the town of Hingham to provide for a location for registered marijuana dispensaries. The primary purpose here is to cause the location of such a facility in the industrial park or office park resident of zoning district, rather, but located within the South Hingham Development Overlay District. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is set forth in your booklets. Is there discussion in the supplemental? Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. Requires for passage a two-thirds affirmative. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. More than two-thirds having voted in favor, the motion is adopted. Article 23. Article 23 again is a zoning bylaw article. Requires for adoption a two-thirds majority. The comment makes clear the intent of the motion. Requires that marketing and sale of affordable units that are created under Hingham's flexible residential development and multi-unit development zoning provisions comply to the Massachusetts, comply with or conform to the Massachusetts Department of Housing and Community Development Regulations, assuring that the units count on Hingham's subsidized housing inventory. The recommended motion of the advisory committee is an affirmative motion. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. More than two-thirds having voted in favor, the motion is adopted. Next, Article 24. Article 24 asks whether the town will amend the zoning bylaw to allow body art establishments under Section 4.21 of the zoning bylaw by special permit A2 in the Industrial Park District and to prohibit such use in all other zoning districts. Recommendation of the advisory committee is in the affirmative. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote.
Yes.
I just have a question. My name is Jane Shute. I live at 427 Gardner Street. Could you please make clear to me exactly what you mean by the industrial zoning district? Are we talking about Route 53 or the South Shore Industrial Park?
Mr. Sullivan from the Planning Board.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Walter Sullivan, 893 Main Street. Walter Sullivan, 893 Main Street, speaking on behalf of the Planning Board. The industrial park includes the South Shore Industrial Park and the Derby Street Shops. When we were looking at this registered marijuana bylaw, the warrant article that was just passed, it was brought to our attention what types of activities, adult activities, were permitted. And it was the majority opinion of the Planning Board to support this warrant article to place body art studios into industrial park districts, which is, as I say, the Derby Street Shops and the South Shore Industrial Park. Thank you.
Is there further discussion or additional questions? Yes. Mr. Schreier.
Joyce Schreier, 82 Gardner Street. Is there a way to pull out the Derby Shops from that industrial zoning? The reason I say that is because the Derby Street Shops are used for sales, but they're additionally used for families to go walking. Multi-age families because it's safe, it's pretty, the sidewalks are in good shape. If you get tired, if you're a senior citizen, there's a little van that can pick you up and take you back to where you'd like to get to your automobile. And if you've got a young child with you who won't walk back across to catch the car, et cetera, the van will help you. It's a very family-oriented place. And I'm very concerned that there might be enticements in the windows which are very close to where the pedestrians are enjoying getting some exercise and being together. And that's not the case in the industrial park over where the Bone Center is because the setbacks are rather far from automobiles that are driving by. And you go there with a purpose. At the Derby Shops, you're kind of drawn into possible spontaneous things. And it just doesn't seem that the two have much similarity. This might be a little bit late to ask for a zoning change in that regard, but it really concerns me that the Derby Shops is being inclusive in this one purpose. And I don't think that those two draws are appropriate for that area, being the Derby Shops. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mrs. Schreier. Mrs. Murphy.
Susan Murphy, 11 Daly Road, Special Real Estate Counsel for the town.
Right in that mic, please.
Sorry about that. Susan Murphy, 11 Daly Road, Special Real Estate Counsel to the town. The Derby Street Shops parcels are within the industrial park. They are permitted as a retail group, which is a sub-use under the use table. I just conferred very quickly with the Chair of the Planning Board. There could be a modification to the zoning that would create a special condition. There are special conditions under Section 3A of the zoning, 3B of the zoning bylaw. So it would have to be an amendment to either the retail group use to carve out body art establishments, or it would have to be a special condition to the body arts establishment to exclude them from retail group. But it could be done.
Yes? Please.
Judy Kelly, 19 Harvest Lane. When looking at this, I don't think the people of South Hingham are fully informed regarding the rationale for why we are being expected to acquire this type business. There's been a lot of discussion this spring regarding the Water Company and the Foss Memorial, et cetera. But this particular article has been sort of sliding under the radar. And I think that it should be tabled till we have enough information to really affirm that this is what we want in our area in the South Hingham. What I also am concerned about is I have been attending the South Hingham Economic Development Committee meeting since the 1st of January. And all I hear there is how they are trying to entice desirable businesses to our area. And now I hear that we are going to affirm an article which is the exact opposite of what has been said since January. I think that it, I think more information should be put out there before anyone here in this room. I don't know how many others feel as ill-equipped as far as this information goes on why and where and what the ramifications are. Because the other thing is that once this is affirmed, there's not going to be any turning back. And we will have opened a Pandora's Box for other undesirable businesses to the South Hingham area. I urge you to vote no at this time and to have it put on the table again.
Yes, I recognize the voter.
Cynthia Hydel, 63 Guilford Road. Like last night, we should look around and see the age of the people here. I think if you walk through the Derby Street Shops, you're going to see a lot of body art on people. You only need to drive right up and park in front of Victoria's Secret and get quite an eye full. So I don't know what our standards are. I don't know where we begin to censor things. Body art is everywhere. I drive all over the state and other places where body art shops are pretty common. And it's a storefront. There's some people inside. I don't know that it's any different from people who go to get their nails done or their hair done or whatever. I don't know that we should be judging the subject of body art when we consider this.
Hi, Judy Sneath, 89 North Street. I am the one person on the Planning Board who voted against this particular change to the bylaw. The body art use has been allowed in the industrial park, no, the industrial, limited industrial zones for as long as there has been body art and zoning in Hingham. The areas where it has been allowed include the shipyard. What this bylaw does is it says you can no longer have body art at the shipyard, but you can have it in the South Hingham Overlay District. And the reason why the Planning Board did that was because it made it consistent with, actually, with the marijuana bylaw. So I was surprised when nobody stood up with the marijuana bylaw. But then, as somebody said earlier, we are objecting to body art. So the reason I objected to this bylaw change was because it hasn't hurt anybody to have a body art allowed in the shipyard. And I don't think it's going to hurt anybody to have it in South Hingham either. As somebody earlier said, a lot of people have body art. It's kind of a mainstream thing. And I feel confident that the owners of the Derby Street Shops kind of know their business. They don't want businesses in there that are going to detract from what people seem to really like. So in zoning, we really try hard not to obstruct things just for obstruction purposes. That I think we try to keep things fairly unregulated unless a regulation is needed. And so I think that body art should be allowed wherever there are businesses in Hingham.
Yes.
Jane Shute, I'm here again, 427 Gardner Street. I'm not in favor of having a body art in South.
Ask you to come closer to the microphone, please.
I feel very strongly that this is not a good idea to just regulate to one part of the town. If body art is so common, as has been described to us, as a nail salon, why should it only be in an industrial park in Hingham? It should be everywhere then. And if that's what we want, we should vote for that. But I don't see how you can justify putting it in only one section of the town. It's a business, a retail business. We don't do this to other retail businesses. So why can we do this to this? Thank you.
Yes, in the back.
Stephanie Kelch for Mallard Run. Judy, thank you for speaking, and I just want to make sure I understand you clearly. If we vote against this article, then body art can happen anywhere in Hingham. If we vote for this article, it can only happen in South Hingham? Do I misunderstand?
A vote against this article would retain the current zoning. The current zoning allows body art in two areas, which currently hold. The shipyard and the Stop &amp; Shop Plaza.
Okay, so to vote for this article is to only allow body art in South Hingham?
To move it to what is the industrial park area, which is basically the Derby Street Shops and the part of Hingham across Route 3. So it would just move it there.
So there's no option to have it in the shipyard? Is that correct?
Well, no. If you vote this article, if you, a no vote for this article retains current zoning, which allows body art in the shipyard and in that Stop &amp; Shop Plaza. So there are two zones called industrial and limited industrial. And those two zones currently allow body art. So it would just stay there. Nothing bad would, nothing, I don't strike the word "bad." Nothing would happen. It would just continue to be as is.
We have tattoos in my family. They're, you know, I know they're around. But let me ask you this. What's, can somebody explain why the choice is made to focus it? Oh, because of the marijuana?
I think it was consistency. We were looking at the marijuana bylaw. We had a lot of mechanisms in place in that bylaw to contain where these registries, these dispensaries would go. And so the feeling was that body art was kind of in the same category and should also go into that same zone.
Marijuana and body art then are in the same category? Well, thank you, though. You've helped me understand a little better.
It's, you know, we all categorize things differently in our minds, and that was the way this was categorized.
Walter Sullivan, 893 Main Street for the Planning Board. Just by way of historical perspective, this was brought to our attention when we were looking at registered marijuana district. And for two purposes, I think the majority of the Planning Board felt it was appropriate to bring this article forward. First, it's apparent that in 2001, when body art statutes were authorized by this town meeting, that we believe a Scrivener's error likely occurred. Specifically, the original warrant in 2001 voted by this group indicated that the body art facilities would be allowed in places where adult activities took place, which included in the comment notes, limited industrial in industrial districts. However, when it made its way into the bylaw, it only talked about it being in limited industrial district, which was the shipyard and the businesses north of Beale Street. Since 2001, there's been a dramatic shift in what occurs in the shipyard and also to the businesses north of Beale Street. While we were talking about registered marijuana dispensaries, we started talking about what was an appropriate place for the location of body art studios. And it occurred to us that probably a Scrivener's error had occurred when it got into the bylaw. It should also be noted that if you want to have a body art studio, you have to apply for a special permit. There continues to be control, just like there is for registered marijuana dispensary as well. So two reasons. One, because we think we're correcting what was a Scrivener's error back in 2001. And secondly, because it seemed like the appropriate thing for consistency purposes of putting both registered marijuana dispensaries and body art facilities into the industrial park district. So that was the whole purpose behind it. And by a majority vote of four to one, the Planning Board voted for purpose, to bring this article forward. Thank you.
Yeah, Don Greeley, 53 Colonial Road, Hingham. I kind of feel like something was just pulled over on us, the voters here, that a marijuana dispensary could now be located in the Derby Street Shops. I don't know who else here has children and is horrified by that fact, but I am. And I think these two articles should be tabled. And the article should read that it's possible to have a marijuana dispensary in the Derby Street Shops. To me, with children going around there and children's stores in the area, that's akin to putting a marijuana dispensary next to a school.
Mr. Ramsey from the Planning Board.
Bill Ramsey, 55 North Street, Chairman of the Planning Board. I just want to address that, the point made by that citizen. The dispensary vote was to zone the marijuana dispensaries in the industrial park only. So to tell you what the rationale was with respect to that issue, the industrial park zoning structure, and this also applies to the issue at hand too with body art. The industrial park zoning structure possesses inherent safeguards for abiding residences. Zoning requirements mandate that underlying rare and side setbacks be four times greater than any other zoning district within the town of Hingham. Secondly, the Planning Board is requiring that dispensaries have 500-foot setbacks from existing residences. And this would create protections that are 20 times greater than any district within the town. And lastly, the board's rationale was that if found it makes sense to co-locate a medical dispensary with an existing medical facility. But the South Shore Hospital Bone and Muscle Center already in the industrial park makes logical community planning sense to sit potential dispensaries within that area. So that addresses your question about the dispensaries. With respect to the body art that my colleagues have already spoken support of, the industrial park has historically within the town been zoned for what the town considers to be adult uses. It's the board's failing that body art, as a nature, would be best suited to be aligned within a district that is much less residential in population than any other district in the town and is aligned with other adult uses that we have within that area of town. So hopefully that clears up your questions. Thank you.
We are focused on Article 24. Is there further discussion? Yes.
Judy Kelly, 19 Harvest Lane. I don't like to see an article like this at town meeting. To me, it divides us. It says, "I don't want it in my section of town, so let's put it in your section of town." I think all of Hingham should be treated the same. And if it applies to South Hingham, it should apply to the other sections of Hingham. For 35 years that I've been here, South Hingham has been fighting the items that the town has decided would be really great in South Hingham. And most of our residents have worked very hard to let the town know that we value our area of South Hingham as much as other areas are valued. And when I see an article like this, if it be someplace on 3A or some other area of town, I like to try to put myself in the shoes of the people who live there. And I like to think, would I want this if this were my home in that area? I hope the people who are here tonight would look at this article and say, "Before we vote yes on it, we really need to know the ramifications of what we are doing." And I don't think most of the people who are sitting here tonight were aware of what could result from this. And as I said before, I am particularly concerned at what follows after we start with the body art aspect of it. So I would, again, highly recommend that we table this and wait till another time before we vote yes or no.
Thank you. Mr. Fage.
Barnard Fage, 101 Wompitack Road. I was going to speak on the marijuana bylaw, but apparently the moderator didn't see me. So with that being said, it would seem to me that this is too much micromanagement by a town trying to oversee a business. These people have a right to run their business. This, in essence, to me, seems to be creating some sort of combat zone. I don't know if you folks remember that, but it used to be in Boston. And this could be the end result. Let's just put it here, and that's where everything goes. And to equate medical marijuana with tattoos and body art, to me, is absurd. And it's sullying both of them. Whether I like or you like body art, it's not our call. They have constitutionally protected rights. It is art. It's their First Amendment right. They can do that. People can pay for that, whether we like it or not. And to, for us to try to, it, it's like, why don't we control every aspect of every business in this town by special permit? In essence, it's a ban. And this is, this is the way some people, this is their solution to, we don't want it in our town. And if push comes to shove, whether it's the medical marijuana people who can sue the town and win, which, by the way, it's, it is going to be legalized within the next 10 years. We're going in that direction. Most people believe that it should be treated like beer. Keep it away from the kids. Do the same thing. That's probably going to happen. But somebody is going to sue the town and win. Some of these body art folks are going to say, you are depriving us of our constitutional protections, and we're all going to be on the hook. So I would vote against this article. Thank you.
Mr. Carey, who has not yet spoken.
I rise to speak against the article and urge a no vote. I don't mind the rationale on the medical marijuana. We are trying to develop medical capabilities in that industrial park. And at least as the legislation now stands, citing the medical marijuana facilities in that area would be appropriate. I have no strong objection to body art. I see it on my children at all holidays. And I don't think that it today has the same character or tenor that it did when it was the, the second greatest attraction in the combat zone. But the rationale expressly articulated for this article is that we used to have it in this area of North Hingham, but over time, the, the areas available have changed in character and purpose. They've got a nice Shipyard operation going with theaters and stores and all of that stuff. Those of us in South Hingham, historically having much less to be proud of than those in North Hingham, view Derby Street Shops somewhat similarly. I'm being facetious, but the fundamental important point I want to make is that everything that goes on in town today looks toward South Hingham, because that's our area of growth. It's, development is going to be in South Hingham. This is going to be in South Hingham. That's going to be in South Hingham. It all has to be managed very carefully. And those of us who are in South Hingham hope we will get appropriate protections as all of this comes. And if that's the appropriate place for the town as a whole to engage in this sort of development, then that's fine. We're all citizens, and we're all in this together. But an expressed rationale that this is a less-than-desirable operation, and we're going to take it out of North and put it in South, is, as has been suggested, an utterly inappropriate way to be deciding the zoning uses for one particular area of the town. And so I oppose it.
Is there anyone who has not yet spoken who wishes to be recognized for first time? Please go ahead.
Cindy Heidel, 63.
You have three minutes.
Guilford. It's a technical question. When I read Article 22, it says, shall be allowed by special permit in the South Hingham Overlay District. When you read 23, it says, refers to it differently. I lost it.
You mean, you mean the motion under 24?
Thank you. Too many pages here.
Then page 39.
Thank you. And in Article 24, it says, in the Industrial Park District. It's worded differently. I, I took it to mean that the Industrial Park District included the Derby Street Shops, but the other reference in the previous article did not include the Derby Street Shops. So I'm confused in the explanation that we got as to what's included where. That's all.
Thank you. Mrs. Murphy, you want to clarify the distinction between the two areas delineated in 22 and 24, please?
Yes. In Hingham, there's a number of, what we call the underlying zoning districts. There's various residential, residential districts, a couple of business districts, and some various industrial districts. Those are our underlying districts. And when you look at the table, Schedule of Uses in Section 3A, you'll see a column for each of those. Then we have what are called overlay districts. So for example, downtown Hingham, the underlying district is Business A. There are other areas of Business A in the town, but there is a downtown Hingham Overlay District. So in South Hingham, there are two primary non-residential areas. There is the Office Park District, and there is the Industrial Park District. Those are separate districts with separate permitted uses. However, there is also an overlay district, the South Hingham Development Overlay District. Within the overlay district is both the Industrial Park and the Office Park. I believe that the speaker who just asked the question is probably looking in the Green Warrant Book with respect to Article 22 for the RMDs. However, there was a correction that needed to be made in the section that she referenced. So it's now reprinted in its entirety in your supplement. So if you look at the same section, Item 1, for Article 22, in your supplemental report, you will see that it now references the Industrial Park District and Office Park District, because this overlay district is not in the Schedule 3A table. And then there is a new Item 1A. And why, Item 1A creates a new special condition, and I was speaking to special conditions earlier. And within the special condition, it says, you can be in the Office Park or the Industrial Park, but only in the overlay district. So that was to exclude any other Office Park area in the town. One other clarification, there is a provision, because people were concerned about the RMDs, they're referred to, in the Derby Street Shops. However, as I mentioned, the Derby Street Shops are permitted as a retail group, and Article 22 specifically states that RMDs shall not be permitted in a retail group. So therefore, they could never go into the Derby Street Shops. So I hope that clarifies those questions.
Is there a further discussion on the recommended motion under Article 24? If not, we come to vote. Again, I reiterate that this is a proposed change to our zoning bylaw, and as such, it requires for its adoption a two-thirds affirmative vote. All those in favor of the recommended motion, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The noes have it. The motion fails to obtain a two-thirds affirmative. The motion is lost. Article 25.
Excuse me?
Yes?
Is it possible to revisit Article 22 so that we make sure that all of us totally understand and vote on it? It just, it went by too fast. And I think, I had read something last night that I thought it definitely said it was not going to be in the Derby Street Shops. But if we're talking about the overlay district, the Derby Street Overlay District, that goes all the way down to Cushing Street, if I'm not mistaken. Is, is that correct? Somebody, isn't the Derby Street Overlay go down beyond, I don't even know whether it goes all the way down to Gardner Street. So I think we need to clarify some of these points before we actually have a roomful of people voting on these, these issues.
If you wish to reconsider Article 22, the appropriate way to do so would be to make a motion to reconsider, and that would require a second and a two-thirds majority, because it is at the same meeting at which the initial vote was taken. So if you want to make such a motion?
I would like to make such a motion, a motion that we revisit Article 22 to clarify precisely where this medical marijuana dispensaries are allowed.
Is there a second on the motion to reconsider?
Aye.
The motion to reconsider will be allowed if there is a two-thirds affirmative vote in favor of the motion to reconsider. All those in favor of reconsidering the action taken under Article 22, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The motion fails. We now come to Article 25. Article 25 is another zoning article, and it would seek to remove from Business Recreation District and include in Residence District A certain properties located on South Street. The comment makes clear that midway through, when the zoning map was updated to reflect the rezoning of the Country Club, certain properties were also shown as included in the Business Recreation District. This was a mapping error. This would modify that outcome. The recommended motion of advisory is that the town amend the zoning bylaw by amending the zoning map to remove from Residence District D and include in A certain parcels set forth in the recommended motion, namely 262 South Street, 264 South Street, and 266 South Street. Being a zoning article, the recommended motion requires for its adoption a two-thirds affirmative vote. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no? It's a unanimous vote. We now come to Article 26. Article 26 is the Community Preservation Committee article. We are going to, as we did last year, handle Article 26 much as we do Article 6, the budget article. And I will turn your attention, please, to the recommendation of the Advisory Committee, which is set forth in their supplemental report. And you will note that there are 14 separate and discrete recommendations of the Community Preservation Committee to have sums of money appropriated for community preservation purposes. So I will read each one, as I did the budget last night. If you wish to hold a specific item, please call out hold. I will mark it in the book. We'll go through the 14 discrete items in that fashion. We'll vote any items that have not been held, and then return to any particular item that has been held. So the recommended motion, that the town appropriate the following sums of money for community preservation purposes as follows. $49,421 for the Community Preservation General Reserve from, rather, the Community Preservation General Reserve for addition to the Community Preservation Committee's administrative fund. $175,000 from the Housing Reserve to be used by the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust for drafting and design related to the Selectmen's parcel development. $175,000 from the Community Preservation Community Housing Reserve to be used by the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust for the Trust's Opportunity Funding Program. $35,000 from Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by the Hingham Historical Archives Task Force for implementing the Hingham Historical Collections Master Plan. $30,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by the Hingham Cemetery Corporation for historic preservation and restoration of the Ames Chapel located in the Hingham Cemetery. $10,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by Second Parish Church Association for historic preservation and development of plans for the Second Parish Handicapped Access Project. $98,049 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by the Hingham Girl Scouts for historic preservation and restoration of the Girl Scout House located at 26 Burr Road. $150,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by Old Colony Building Association to replace the existing leaking roof with a slate roof, both to restore the original historic appearance of the Old Colony Lodge and to preserve the building located at 85 $38,500 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve for deposit to the town's Conservation Fund for purchase of land, conservation restrictions for prior CPC land acquisitions, capital improvements and expenses related to such acquisitions, to make deposits or down payments toward acquisitions or creation of such interest in open space or otherwise preserve open space. $50,000 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve to be used by the Community Planning Department for a comprehensive trails plan. $38,213 from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve, and $6,287 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by the Hingham Conservation Commission to purchase the land and interests totaling 6.31 acres from Boy Scout Troop 4 located in the Liberty Pole neighborhood. And that, the town authorized the Conservation Commission with the approval of the Board of Selectmen to grant a conservation restriction on such parcel that meets the requirements of MGL Chapter 184, Sections 31 through 33 inclusive, as required under Section 12 of the Community Preservation Act, Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 44B. $40,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to complete funding for construction of the Whitney Wharf Bridge. $100,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by the trustees of the Bathing Beach for the Bathing Beach Stabilization Project, and $250,000 from the Community Preservation General Reserve to be used by the Recreation Commission for infrastructure improvements to the historic Cordage Factory Head House, also known as the Barn. We have items 1 through 7, 9, 10, 11, and I'll strike that, 9 and 10, and 12, 13, and 14. Holds have been made on 8 and 11. So I would invite us now to focus on the 12 items that have not been held. All those in favor of the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote on those 12 items. We now come to debate number eight, the $150,000 for the restoration of the roof at the Old Colony Building at 85 Central Street. Mr. Curley? Mr. Curley, on behalf of the Community Preservation Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Bob Curley, 1 Grist Mill Lane, Chair of the Community Preservation Committee. We did have some slides. Just by way of background, the Community Preservation Act was adopted by this town in 2001. It serves three fundamental purposes: the preservation of historic resources, the, the preservation of open space and recreational land, and the of open space and recreational land, and the preservation of and development of community housing. This year, we had multiple applications leading to recommendations on the 14 items that have just been read. Our process included the submission and review of written applications in accordance with the published guidelines of the committee. We had review of those guidelines and then assignment of project managers to each project. We had multiple public meetings, and we visited each of the projects that were involved. If we could just go to the next slide, this gives an overview. Between 2002 and 2013, the town had total community preservation receipts of over 12 million dollars. 4.4 million of that amount came from state matching grants, and the rest came from essentially surtax revenue on the property tax. The 2014 receipts were roughly 434,000 dollars from the state match, which was an increase this year, and 854,000 from the surtax. As I was the project manager for the Old Colony Lodge project, let me address that. The Old Colony Lodge is located on Central Street, roughly across the street from the Armory. It's a historic building that has housed the Old Colony Lodge of the Masons since the 1920s. In the 1920s, when it was originally built, it had a slate roof, which was a unique architectural feature of the building. The Masons and their building association have been diligent in the maintenance of this building, and in the course of our vetting of this project, we learned that they had spent in recent years over 300,000 dollars in building maintenance costs. The original proposed cost for this project was roughly 300,000 dollars. Through the vetting process, we were able to fine tune things so that the total cost got down to roughly 227,000 dollars. And the Old Colony Lodge was asking this community to help it preserve its roof with 150,000 dollars of community preservation funds. So we asked ourselves the question that probably a lot of you are asking: seems like a pretty expensive roof. So we took a hard look at that. We took a look at the longevity of the roof, which will probably last between 80 and 100 years. We got great words of approbation from Chief Duff about the slate roofs on our firehouses, and how they have been one of the best investments that the town has made in terms of roofing. And we actually determined that overall, it is more of a cost benefit to invest in the slate roof than in three alternative roofs that would probably needed over the same period of time, and so that we thought that this made sense. I will let others, I think, speak to much of the good work that the Lodge does, but basically, its doors are not closed to anyone. It has hosted almost every community organization that has been active in this town. It has been active in blood drives, in raising money, both locally and for national interests. The Shriners is probably the most well-known of their charitable activities. So after significant consideration of the issues and multiple public hearings, the Community Preservation Committee decided to recommend the amount of 150,000 dollars because it was consistent with our community preservation purposes for historic preservation of what is a significant and commonly-used building within the town of Hingham. Thank you.
Bill Ramsey, 55 North Street, speaking for Old Colony Lodge. I'm a member of the Lodge, I've been a member of the Lodge for several years, and just wanted to add to some of the points made by Mr. Curley. The Lodge itself was erected in 1928. It was erected with, under the colonial revival style with brick walls and a slate roof with copper gutters. The roof lasted approximately 60 years. Approximately 1984, the Lodge wanted to keep the slate roof for several reasons. As Bob mentioned, it's more cost-effective, it's more in keeping with historical preservation of the building, and just a better roof. Fortunately, the Lodge didn't have the funds to do that at that time. So what the Lodge did was did patchwork with shingles that are on the roof now. Those shingles have now deteriorated significantly, to the point that our building is being damaged by the leakage and the other wears of the weather on the roof. The reason why we're asking for the slate roof is because we've told that the slate roof would last us 110 and possibly 120 years if the roof was put on. Secondly, it's more in keeping with the historical part of the building. And we, as a Lodge, as Masons, Masons don't talk about the great work they do, but there is much out there. We allow our building to be used by any organization in this town that asks to use it. That includes the Boy Scouts, that includes the 1058th National Guard Unit, that includes the Shriners Burn Center, that includes other Masonic organizations. We've never turned our back on an organization who's asked us to use our building. So although we are a private organization, I would maintain that we are quasi-public or private organization because we serve as so many with what we do. Lastly, I'd ask you to support this because our membership is part of the fabric and community of this town. We have never, ever asked the town for any support, and I can tell you, we probably will never, ever ask the town for support again. But over the years, we have made capital improvements to our building through the works of our members: plumbers that are members, painters that are members, and so on and so forth. They've donated all this work to our building at cost. Unfortunately, we don't have a roofer. Wish we did. I'd ask you to support us tonight and support the good works we do. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Norrie?
Dana Baxter, 57 Elm Street, member of Old Colony Lodge and an acting officer. I come to you tonight on hands and knees looking for the money to put a roof on. I know it's an expensive proposition, and you're probably wondering why. Old Colony Lodge was established in 1792 down in Hanover, shortly moved to Hingham in 1807. We've been in Hingham for over 200 years. We've had members of our organization read like street maps of Witten, Lincoln's, Bates, Loring, Farring, Hershey, Wilder, Burr, Foster, Marble, Marsh, Thayer, Cushing, Downing, Stoddard, Howard, Wilder, Cross, Bickford, Kimball, as now we have Olson's, and Mr. Healy, and our Chairman of the Planning Board, Bill Ramsey, and several other prominent citizens. We don't stand in front of the camera holding a check saying how much we gave to the food pantry. We don't stand and look for applause from the Toys 'R' Tots. We gave out 20,000 dollars worth of scholarships to Hingham students in the last four years. We do care packages for the troops of the 1058th and allow the wives and children to come into our building to congregate when they were overseas. During World War I, we used the basement to prepare bandages to be shipped overseas for our troops. We do mindship programs, which is a child identification situation, so that if case whatever happens, the child can be recognized. We do Relay for Life every year. We do a pig roast recently to raise scholarship funds for our Angel Fund, which is to supply students who are without needs with materials for schools and trips and field trips, without telling where the money comes from. We stand and we raise money through our 225 members for Old Colony, our 125 from Macedonian Lodge, our 90 from the Eastern Stars. We have a church that meets every Sunday in our building because their building has been sold. We allow anybody and everybody to use our building at will. We do not discriminate or tell any reason why you can't use it. It is there for the community, and every fundraising dollar we raise, we give back to the community. All we, we've put in 300,000 dollars worth of work from drainage to painting, to driveways, to handicap access, to elevators, to new bathrooms, all to prepare the building for the public. We just don't have the capital or the means to put the roof on to seal the building for the next 100 years. I would greatly appreciate a positive vote on this so that we can continue the work that we've done in the past for the next 100 years for the citizens of Hingham. Thank you.
If not, we come to vote on Item 8 under Article, the motion under Article 26. Requires for passage a majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. We return now to Item 11 under 26. Thirty-eight thousand dollars from the Community Preservation Open Space Reserve and 6,287 from General Reserve to be used by the Conservation Commission to purchase the land and interest totaling 6.31 acres from Boy Scout Troop 4 located in Liberty Pole. Gary?
Gary Tondorf-Dick, 1029 Main Street. I'm the Planning Board Representative to the Community Preservation Committee. I think it's important to look at some of the background on the Boy Scout parcel, which is located in Liberty Pole. In 1953, the Eel River Field Trust was established to hold the 6.31 acres of land, and Liberty Pole bequeathed to the Boy Scout Troop 4 by Winthrop Cushing. The Boy Scout Troop has used this land up until recent years for campouts and their activities, but has not actively used the land since and has no plans to use the land in the future. The importance of this open space parcel in Liberty Pole is, first of all, it's accessed from the Liberty Pole roads of Pilgrim and Colonial Roads. It has a right-of-way of access at 53 Colonial Road. The parcel abuts a town-owned conservation land parcel called the Eel River Reservation. This reservation would be doubled in size if this Boy Scout parcel was purchased by the town because it abuts this other Eel River parcel. But also significant is the ecology of this land, in that the Eel River bisects this land on a triangular fork. And it's the last remaining cold water spring-sourced stream in Hingham, and contains, because of this, among other wildlife species, wild brook trout, redfin pickerel, and stream salamanders. It's a really important, pristine natural resource, which is, given the price per acre, the Community Preservation Committee thought that this was probably the best bargain of all of the recommendations that we've put forth to a town meeting. So I'd appreciate a positive vote if you so desire. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Yeah, Donald Greeley, 53 Colonial Road, Hingham. I am also a former Eagle Scout from Troop 4, so I'm intimately familiar with this land. My question is, what is your intentions that you're going to do with this? You've already owned the adjacent parcel, so you're almost doubling the size of that parcel in a section of land of the town that is essentially landlocked. So what are your intentions? How are you going to use this or access it, or are you just going to leave it as a natural habitat?
Thank you, Mr. Tondorf-Dick.
The purpose of the purchase would be to create a conservation land parcel, which would be preserved in perpetuity and adjacent to the Eel River Reservation. So what we would have is a publicly accessible conservation parcel, which would be preserved forever and contribute to the quality of life in not only Liberty Pole neighborhood, but also in the whole town.
Thank you.
Then my second question is, how would you intend to access this since it is landlocked?
There are two points of access. One is at Pilgrim and, near the intersection of Pilgrim and Colonial Roads. That access goes to and directly through the Eel River Trust. There is another access on 53 Colonial Road. So there's a right-of-way to 53 Colonial. There's also a direct access through the Eel River. So actually, there, when the two parcels are joined, there'll be two access points.
Further questions or discussion on Sub-Item 11 under 26? If not, we come to vote. Requires for adoption a majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article 27. Article 27 asks whether the town will accept Chapter 200A, Section 9 of the General Laws, which provides for the disposition of abandoned funds back into the town's general fund upon required notice to the person entitled to the funds and upon expiration of the deadline for claiming those funds, all in accordance with the applicable law. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is an affirmative motion that the town adopt Chapter 200A, Section 9A. Is there discussion? Hearing none, we come to vote. Requires for adoption majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article 28. Article 28 asks whether the town will vote to extend the term of an intermunicipal agreement for regional cooperation and the provision of solid waste and recycling services for the South Shore Recycling Cooperative for an additional term through June 30, 2018. The Recycling Cooperative is, as the comment states, a voluntary association of 14 South Shore towns. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is in the affirmative that the town authorize the selectmen to extend the term of the agreement for regional cooperation for the provision of solid waste and recycling services for an additional term through June 30, 2018, and further to authorize the Board of Selectmen to execute an amended intermunicipal agreement, a copy of which will be filed with the town clerk, to effect the extension of the term and other changes set forth therein. Requires for adoption a majority. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. We now come to Article 29. Article 29 asks whether the town will approve the establishment of a new general bylaw to be known as Article 42, Noise Control Bylaw as described therein. I note a couple of Scrivener's changes that I draw to your attention. First, in the recommended motion. First, in the recommended motion, under M in Section 3, and elsewhere, you should substitute the word residence for residential. The district is the residence district. And then if you go to page 54, line 5, which begins, person's legal status as owner, owner lesser, please insert after lesser, lessie, L-E-S-S-E-E. And then in Section 7, under small b, again, you will want to substitute the word residence for residential. And then toward the end of c, in that same section, again, substitute residence for residential. And then, on page 55, under 14, after 14, under b for permits, in line 3, which begins, so as to reasonably minimize, and strike the word the. On page 55, right before the Section 9 transition, the section b is in boy permits, third line, strike the word the, so as to reasonably minimize any adverse impact. So we are being invited here to consider the approval of the establishment of a new general bylaw to be known as Article 42. This will require for adoption a majority vote. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is an affirmative motion, so it is the main motion before you. Is there discussion? Mr. Sealan?
Oop, little loud. Good evening. My name is Jerry Sealan, 166 Hershey Street, and I'm speaking tonight in opposition to Article 29. Writing good regulations is hard. I served on the ZBA for a number of years and then on Advisory Committee, and I've seen many regulations make their way through the process, both the zoning bylaws, which we've seen tonight can be very difficult, and as general bylaws. Now, in my experience, most successful regulations share a few things in common. Number one, they're clear and easily understood. Number two, they're relatively easy to police and enforce. Number three, their potential unintended consequences are limited. Now, while I admire anyone who works diligently to craft good regulations, and I respect the efforts of the folks that put this noise bylaw together, I think it fails the test of a good regulation in a number of ways. First, for the sake of comparison, let's think about examples of clear and easily understood regulations that we live by relatively successfully every day. We, as a community, have decided what constitutes speeding, for example, so we establish and post specific speed limits. By the same token, red light means stop. If you run the light, you get a ticket. Our zoning bylaw tells us that in certain districts, you can build your two-and-a-half story house no closer than 15 feet from the side lot line. Now, you might, from time to time, find any one of these regulations unreasonable, but you do your best to obey them, and you know that if you violate them, you're likely to pay a penalty. Now, this proposed noise control regulation, by contrast, begins by stating, if I may paraphrase and combine a bit, "No person shall make any noise at any time that may disturb or annoy a reasonable person." Now, we probably all consider ourselves reasonable people, but as we've seen for the past two evenings, reasonable people often disagree. And since reasonable disagreement about restrictions on behavior will always be with us, we normally solve the problem by establishing fixed standards that we all agree to live within. When it comes to noise, if we, as a community, think noise is a problem, we should define what constitutes a noise problem with measurable standards such as decibel levels and not leave it open to vague and subjective interpretations of reasonableness. How about enforcement? If you run a red light, it's pretty obvious to the policeman nearby or to the NSA drone that might be hovering overhead and observing our every move. Your driving speed is easily measured by a radar gun, and the building inspector's measuring tape is hard to dispute when your house measures 14 feet from the side lot line. Conversely, how will the first provision of this bylaw be enforced? If there are no objective standards of annoying noise, will the police officer be forced to decide who is more reasonable, you or your neighbor? Some of the later provisions of the proposed bylaw, like the use of certain tools after hours, restrict specific activities that might not otherwise even be audible. So just because these activities can't be heard, or nobody sees you breaking the law, does that make them legal? Or does it make you a scofflaw? Finally, assuming the primary goal of this regulation was originally to control egregiously loud noises, I think there could be a number of unintended consequences that'll make life unpleasant for all of us. Will you get fined because one of your neighbors thinks the sound of your kids playing in the yard is annoying? Are the students cheering at a football or lacrosse game now going to be considered rule breakers because they get too excited? Will lively outdoor dining in one of our nice new restaurants be cause for complaint? Or will we be forced to seek permits from the police chief every time we have a dinner party on the back porch? Paragraph 7B tells us we can't use construction tools outside or inside the house after 7:00 PM on weekdays. When do I get to work in my basement shop? Sometimes weekday summer evenings are the only available times I have to work in the yard. Well, I have to pay $100 or $200 or $300 every time I use my relatively quiet hedge clippers after 8:00 PM, as it says in paragraph 7C. I don't much enjoy trimming my hedge, but I think that's really adding insult to injury. In closing, I suggest that if we're concerned with the particular sounds of loud gas-powered leaf blowers, lawn mowers, and after-hours dumpster pickups, let's debate a simple rule to limit these few specific items. If we're more concerned about noise levels in general, let's debate acceptable and easily measured decibel levels for different times of the day and days of the week. But let's not create an open-ended law that's based on extremely subjective criteria that unintentionally limits otherwise benign activities and that will inevitably lead to contentious disputes about how loud is loud and who is a reasonable person. I urge you to be reasonable and vote no on Article 29. Thank you.
Mr. Page?
Bernard Page, 102 Walbert Tech Road. I know a little bit about sound, and there are no standards here. There are no frequencies, there are no decibel levels. It's basically, if the listener finds something objectionable by this, they can call the cops. The cops are going to have to be trained as to where they can put their recording or their measuring devices, at what frequency, at what decibel level. I mean, this isn't even junk science. This is about as ambiguous as one can get. If I play or make a 100-hertz sound at 100 decibels, it's not really a big deal. If I make a 5,000-hertz sound at 100 decibels, everybody in this place would have their ears bleeding. So you need some sort of subjective standards and some sort of measurable devices. I mean, we have, you know, the police have speed radar guns. They can tell you how fast you're going. It's very simple, it's cut and dry. But depending on where you hear it from, whether you're a foot away, whether you're on axis, off axis, it doesn't matter. This isn't anywhere near ready for prime time. And, for example, our moderator has an extraordinary voice, and he is very loud. By this, somebody could say, "I don't like what you're singing," and call the cops on him. I mean, it's that simple. So I'm suggesting that, you know, maybe if it comes back and we have some actual standards. But this is also, understand, this is going to involve training some people, and they're going to need instruments like a microphone, and it's going to have a meter, and it has to say, "This frequency, you hit this frequency for this long." I mean, we all hear these boombox cars that are like rolling volcanoes. There's nothing that we can really do about it unless you can actually catch them in the act, and they're violating specific noise standards. So this is, I mean, this is, I don't even know what this is. Thank you.
Mr. King?
My name's Dennis King. Live at 4 East Gate Lane. I was a member of the Noise Bylaw Study Committee, and I want to take issue with a couple of things that have been said tonight. The notion that the standards in this bylaw...
Is it a little louder?
Sure. Thank you. The notion that there is no enforceable standard in this bylaw is incorrect. In Section 6B, it says, "The facts required to establish a noise disturbance shall be identical to those required to establish a disturbance of the peace under the common law and punishable under Mass. General Laws, Section 27253." This is a crime that is proven beyond a reasonable doubt every day in this Commonwealth. And one of the main reasons for this bylaw was the Hingham Police Department coming to us and saying, "Look, right now, our only recourse to someone who is disturbing the peace is to cite a Hingham resident with a crime, charge them with a crime. We don't want to do that. We want to have a civil enforcement measure." The other thing that the police department said to us is, "Look, in this town, there's this unwritten rule that construction can't start before 7:00 AM, but that's a problem because there's no written rule, and we really have nothing to enforce. If a contractor starts up the generator at 6:00 AM, we want to be able to point to a bylaw and do something about it." The gentleman who spoke about decibel levels, I just want to say this, the draft of this bylaw that was put out for public comment included a decibel level requirement, and there was a firestorm of protest in response to that. And someone a moment ago talked about it being easy to measure noise levels. There is no easy way to measure noise levels. Talk to any noise consultant, you have to deal with issues of ambient noise. How do you factor out when you're down on 3A where the ambient noise level is probably 50 to 55 decibels anyway? How do you factor that out? Then there's the temporal element. Every bylaw we looked at nationwide that had decibel levels in it as a criteria provided the rule said, "If you exceed this decibel level for more than 15 minutes in any 60-minute period." And so we got to thinking, is a Hingham police officer really going to stand by someone's side lot for an hour with a little noise meter to measure it? And the answer was no. Even if we had it, it wouldn't be enforced. So I take great issue with the comment that there is, that police officers would have to be retrained. This is a law that they enforce currently, every day. And the only thing this bylaw is doing is giving them an ability to cite someone with a civil infraction instead of charging them with a crime. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Does this mic work? Stanley Folman, 5 Beale Road. I live across the street, across from 3A, from the Anchor Plaza. I've had several occasions where...
Can I ask you to come closer to that mic?
Sure. I was trying not to overwhelm it. I live across 3A from Anchor Plaza. I've had several occasions in mid-winter where the landscaping company has been clearing the lot of debris and trash at 2:30 in the morning. Presently, as the gentleman pointed out, the only thing you can do is to cite them for criminal infraction. That's very complicated. Also, we've had dumpsters being emptied at 4:00 and 5:00 in the morning from the surrounding commercial lots. If any of the people on the leafy residential streets of Hingham think that's not a problem, I'll be glad to rent a commercial dumpster and drop it on your driveway at 4:00 in the morning. You'll get some phone calls. Also, we've had deliveries from 18-wheelers in the middle of the night. Again, you may not think that's a big deal. If you don't think so, I can rent an 18-wheeler and have a delivery next door to your house. You'll notice it in the middle of the night, I guarantee you. So these are not trivial complaints. If someone wants to operate a power tool in their basement garage, you've got soundproofing. I don't have an issue with that. If you want to run a leaf blower on your front lawn at 2:30 in the morning in January, I've got a real issue with that. Thank you.
Mr. Barclay?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Barclay, 11 Cottage Street, on behalf of the Advisory Committee. Sometimes implementing a new bylaw like this can be difficult because when you have a very well-documented need that has been articulated by the police department, you want to try to make sure that you address that as best as you can. Obviously, you also want to try to avoid any unintended consequences. What you've heard tonight is that, right now, as it currently stands, if you make too much noise, or if your neighbor wants to call you in for your cookout, they can do it, and the police are going to come, and they have the option, as Dennis said, only to arrest you, or not. And we want to make sure that, first of all, the police department does not want to arrest Hingham citizens for backyard barbecues. They want to, you know, give you a chance, as they typically do, and if you don't take that chance, then they'll give you a fine. They don't want to arrest you. And there's a number of reasons. First of all, that comes with a criminal record, and nobody wants a criminal record these days that can follow you in a lot of different places. My wife had to chaperone a school field trip. She had to fill out a Cory form. She passed, of course, but, you know, these are the types of reasons why the police don't want to arrest people. The other thing is, is that if the police arrest somebody for this and have to go to court and file the paperwork, this takes an officer off the street. We want our police officers going after the bad guys, not spending time in court for disturbing the peace infractions. The second thing, as has been said, and this is an important part, is that, you know, there are a lot of commercial and construction activities right now where there aren't any rules. And, you know, there's been a number of instances on Beale Street where construction activities started at 6:00 in the morning. The police get a complaint, they go to the site, they ask them to stop, but there's nothing really that they can point to in writing. Two days later, they get the same call. This is important for the police to have something to point to in their construction, for construction and commercial activities. As was said, you know, there have been a number of meetings, there was a number of hearings with the selectmen, and hopefully that this current version isn't really a surprise to anybody, but some of the things that are excluded, first of all, all athletic events, sporting events, athletic, anything, you know, wiffle ball in your backyard are excluded. The decibel levels, as was so well explained earlier, that's not really a realistic way to enforce this. As it stands now, nobody's measuring decibels to arrest you for disturbing the peace, and, you know, we're not going to use our officer's time standing at your property line for an hour to measure decibels. This has the unanimous support of both the selectmen and the Advisory Committee. We listened to this, we know that there's been a lot of public discussion about this, and as we saw it, we thought that the police department had really articulated a need for some help to enforce noise ordinances, and we made every effort that we could to make sure that there were no unintended consequences. I mean, the future's never certain, and anything that we talk about... And anything that we talk about or vote on, I don't think anybody can ever get up and say with 100% certainty that they can predict what's going to happen in the future. And we made every attempt to make sure that we thought through all of the unintended consequences and did our best to make sure that this was a bylaw that gave the police the necessary instruments to enforce noise ordinances without overreaching or infringing on the rights of the Hingham citizens. It's been unanimously approved by the selectmen and the advisory committee, and we hope you agree with us and vote yes. Thank you.
Mr. Buick?
John Buick, 34 Otis Hill Road. I'm a little stunned at this recommendation. It seems that the group that put it together is totally unaware that Massachusetts has a noise control regulation, 310 South CMR 7.10. I think that regulation should be reviewed. If there are things that are needed at the local level, then they should be augmented. But the police have authority under that regulation to regulate excessive noise that is defined very carefully, as opposed to this regulation.
Chief Perino? Chief Perino is not a resident of the town of Hingham. He may speak with the approval of the meeting by majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye!
All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote.
Thank you. For years, the Hingham Police Department has needed a tool while addressing noise complaints in Hingham.
May I ask you to speak right into the mic?
Sure. For years, residents have complained about construction. As you all know, over the last multi-number of years, we have many, many construction projects in town. We've had complaints with construction noise at 6:00 AM, noise from dumpsters being emptied at 5:00 AM, waking residents up and affecting their quality of life. Now, the only tool is to arrest or summons people to court criminally for disturbing the peace, giving that person possibly a criminal record. A noise committee was formed by the Board of Selectmen. The committee had many public meetings. We received much feedback, and we made changes to the proposal and came up with a final draft as before you tonight. By passing this bylaw, this would allow our officers to issue a civil citation with a fine instead of arresting or summoning a person to court, having officers attend court trials, causing overtime, and the person possibly being charged with a criminal record. In February of this year, we had a construction company decided to start their vehicles at 6:00 in the morning to warm up their vehicles because it was cold. And we got complaints from our residents that it woke them up. The officer responded to the scene, and the foreman stated that he didn't know that there was any problem with it. But so he did shut down the engines. Two days later, 6:15, the residents from the neighborhoods called again. "This is ridiculous. Two days this week, we've been woken up by these construction vehicles, and then this particular day, they were moving the equipment, so the backup alarms are going off." The officer goes to the scene, same foreman. He says, "Oh, I forgot. I'm sorry." Okay? So the officer had a choice. He could have charged him disturbing the peace, summoned him into court. The officer told him, "You need to stop this. You're causing a problem in this neighborhood." So in this particular case, the officer could have handed him a $100 citation, civil fine. Like somebody said earlier, you run a red light, you get a ticket. You break the bylaw, in two days, you get a citation. The noise committee has agreed to stay together for another year and see how this noise article works out. The bottom line is, this is a quality-of-life issue for our residents. And as one of the gentlemen tonight said, he's woken up to many, many times when the dumpsters are being emptied across the street from him. If you are being woken up every morning, it's an issue for you. It's a quality-of-life issue. I'm asking you to give us the tool to provide a good quality of life for our citizens, and I ask you to vote yes on Article 29. Thank you.
Mr. Moderator? I am Warren Palacere, 147 Main Street. I'd like to first thank Dennis over here for not naming me as the person that created the firestorm. When the decibel level first went up, it did concern me. So I'm probably one of those people that was against this amendment and turned out, after going to a lot of the meetings and understanding the efforts that were being done and why they were being done, that I'm now for it. I think a lot of people have spoken about a transparent process in this town. If you want to take your body out and get out to these meetings and understand what's going on, you'll be able to understand that there is a transparent process that goes on in this town. And this bylaw is a heck of a lot different than what it first started out to be. And quite honestly, mine, my wife's, my family's loyalty is to the police department of this town. We're very proud of the police and the way that they provide our services. I don't want our police officers sitting in front of a house for an hour and listening for noises that may or may not be coming out. I don't want them chasing around the cars with a decibel meter. I don't want them chasing down motorcycles that may be a little bit too loud. I want them to do exactly what they've been doing here for us as citizens every single day. I'd like to ask you to join me and give the power to the police department to answer these basically two major areas. One is dumpsters, and the other is the moving of boxes in such a power equipment at construction sites. So please join me in supporting our police department. Thank you very much.
Is there further discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. White?
Timothy White, 35 Kimble Beach Road. I've had the good fortune to reside both in North Hingham and in South Hingham. And now that I know that my body art needs are taken care of and medical marijuana needs are taken care of, we can talk about noise. And in both places, I've never had a problem with noise in the town. And but looking at the comment, it appears that in the years 2011 to 2013, there were 248 noise complaints in the town. So reasonable people can have problems in respect of what is noise and what is not noise. And from 2011 to 2013, the Hingham Police Department resolved those issues in one way or another. My guess is that most of those 248 complaints were resolved civilly. So to suggest that we've only got this criminal option, I don't think is a fair reason to support this article. If the Hingham Police Department summons an individual who has violated or made too much noise in the town to the Hingham District Court, typically, it's going to be a clerks' hearing, and it's going to be resolved civilly. That's not going to change. And if we're going to have, in the next two years, 248 more complaints, some of those complaints are going to be resolved criminally. The Hingham Police Department already exercises that discretion. They're going to continue to exercise that discretion whether or not we pass this bylaw. There will be occasions where, unfortunately, the only resolution is the criminal court system. Now, having said that, there's also been the issue raised in respect to the trucks warming up and things of that nature. And I think I can be pretty sympathetic with that because especially on a weekend, you don't want to be getting up at 6:00 in the morning if you don't have to. But it's also been brought to this town meeting's attention that there is a CMR, and that's a Code of Mass. Regulations, Section 310, and I don't know what the other section was. But it suggests to me that there is already a mechanism in place as well to deal with that situation in a civil nature and that the police department can do it. So I guess it's the old saying that if it's not broke, don't fix it. And that is my concern with this bylaw, that it is somewhat complicated. The biggest problem I actually had with the bylaw is that the police can now exercise discretion as to whether or not they'll give you a verbal warning. And I'd be curious as to why, you know, in a complaint of this nature, we have so many more serious problems, not just in this town, but in this state, in this country, that why is a verbal warning not a mandatory requirement for a first noise complaint? You know, the folks that are having the parties in the backyard, the kids that get a little bit loud at night. We don't want to be at the discretion of anybody without at least having that one bite of the apple. And I think that that would have been a sensible thing to put in this bylaw. So as the bylaw is drafted, I respectfully ask you to vote against it.
Mr. Fage?
Barnard Fage, 101 Womatech Road. Dumpsters, you can measure them. You don't have to have a sound meter at the particular dumpster to know basically the sound pressure level that a dumpster makes. Chainsaws, whether they're at idle, whether they're being... whether they're at full throttle, they make certain noises. They are measurable. If you wanted to specify what decibel level or what you are trying to prevent, that's something that is enforceable because you can say, "At 6:00 in the morning, this dumpster was dropped." The typical dumpster produces this amount of sound pressure level. You're violating the code. That's one thing. This is... It is so subjective. And there are so many different things that make noises that you could have people... There's a, I believe there's a new term called swatting, where kids are playing games and calling cops and things like that just to get them out, just to see what they can do. Something like this could be used to harass your neighbor. If somebody said, "You broke the law," I'd say, "Okay, prove it. What did I do? How much noise did I make? What is the objective standard?" I wish that I could go into a courtroom and practice law the way some of these bylaws folks try to practice physics. We are dealing with physics here. Everything has a number, and you have to be able to prove it. So, I mean, this is, I understand what the police want to do, and I understand that none of us want to be woken up at, you know, 6:00 in the morning. And there are already apparently applicable laws. And there are other things that we can do probably to rein this in. But as it is right now, it is just totally open to a subjective analysis of...
Do you have one minute?
And like I said, it's really not ready for prime time. There are physics involved in it, and that's, this is science. You can't, a cop couldn't just pull you over and say, "You were speeding. You were going 44 miles an hour." You say, "Prove it." He has the gun. That's the science. No science, you can't prove it. Thank you.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Good evening. Sue Sullivan, 26, Governor Andrew Road. And I had absolutely no intention of speaking on this article to begin with. But I have to say, and with absolutely all due respect to Chief Perino and the police, and I really do believe that I think that they... I like the idea of the fines. I do like the idea of having a verbal warning first as someone who might have a 50th birthday party for a friend or something in my backyard that might get a little bit, you know, loud. I'd like to be able to at least have somebody come and say, "You're too loud. Give us a chance to lower it and then get the fines and all." And I absolutely agree with all that. But this article, as it is written, has so many loopholes in it, and I'll just name a few. We talk about dumpsters and trash receptacles and all as if it's the same all over town. Here we are. We've spent a lot of time on incorporating, you know, new regulations and all so that we can bring business into town. And yet, the South Shore Park, which has no residential and all, is going to actually be held to this same standard. In my day job, my life, I run a business association in Boston, and it's all industrial businesses and all. And it's restaurants, and it's all kinds of things. Restaurants, and you don't want people getting their deliveries on North Street in the middle of the day. When we restored downtown a few years ago, we specifically said, "No deliveries on North Street during periods of hours when people are there." Now we're saying, "Well, you can't have it other times. You can't be making noise. You can't be doing Tosca Cafe and Stars and all when they take their trash and all out at the end of the night and they empty their dumpsters." You know, this is after these time periods. So this is just kind of thrown everything into one big container because people don't want to hear trash receptacles at 5... They don't want to hear dumpsters at 5:00 in the morning, and they don't want to hear trucks. And I think we need to revisit this because, you know, residential, our residential districts versus our commercial districts versus our industrial districts, they have to be dealt with very differently in this. And again, we look at the reasonableness and a person, you know, what a reasonable person would consider. Well, you know what? I hear the yacht club's horn every night during the summer, and I'm a mile or so away. Does that mean they can't do that anymore? Because I might not, you know, I'm a reasonable person, but I don't like it. I guess, you know, there's a whole lot of ifs and whats. You know, another is, we're not allowed to use power tools and all after a certain amount of time, after a certain time period. Well, what happens if my basement floods and I have to use a sump pump, and that sump pump has to run, and my neighbor doesn't really care? Okay? And it's 11:00 at night, and they call the police to get me to stop using my sump pump? Is that going to, is the policeman going to come? And they're not going to give me a permit? Who has the ability to give me a permit to do this at 11:00 at night? I mean, there are just too many ifs, ands, buts. And I really believe that, given the state code and given a simple code of, "Okay, if there's a noise disturbance..." I mean, I'm looking at sections, you know. And as I said, I didn't plan on speaking, so I didn't have all of these prepared. But I'm looking at this going, you know, Section A, Section B, I mean, Section 6A and B sort of cover the general, the general noise disturbances. And then we change what it is that the police can do. I'm all for giving the police the ability to do what they need to do and the tools. I just don't think this is the right article. I don't think they've done enough thinking of those unintended consequences, and that's about it. Thanks.
Yes, sir.
Jason Ryan, 16 Brewster Road. I am speaking in favor of the article, but I would like to propose an amendment to Section 8, Paragraph 8. There is a unique group of people within Hingham using a unique town asset that may be disenfranchised by the existing wording. So as I described this group of people, one of whom is my wife, this may either encourage you to vote for the overall motion or not vote for the overall motion because I think it also plays into many of the issues we've heard around all the exceptions and whatnot. So I'd like to try and avoid one of the unintended consequences that our advisory board members tried to build into this bylaw. I also am in support of it because our chief of police is in support of it, and I believe that we can amend this bylaw at any time in a future town meeting if we feel that it becomes too restrictive. So Section 8, Paragraph 8 currently reads bells, chimes, or carolions. This is, these are the things that are exempted between 7:00 AM and 9:00 PM?
So you're in Section 8A, subsection 8?
Correct. Bells, chimes, or carolions, or their amplification... Bells, chimes, or carolions, or their amplified, recorded, or other electronic substitution while being used in conjunction with religious services, ordered in note time intervals between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. Within our town, we have the Hingham Memorial Bell Tower, which is very close to completing a year of renovations that were funded by CPA monies from last year. There is a group of seven or eight folks who gather every Tuesday night, 7:00 p.m., to perform what's called change bell ringing in the English style. This is ringing a set of tuned bells in a series of mathematical patterns called changes, although my wife and her friends would say that they're keen to ring a plain Bob Minor tonight. That's bell ringing lingo, which is why no one laughed when I said it. This group also rings at our parades, they ring on Lincoln Day. There are groups that come from the North Church, Old North Church in the North End to ring in our tower. There are groups that come from the original foundry of the bells in England, Whitechapel Foundry, they come over and they ring in our tower. Each bell is a replica of a bell from the town of Hingham, England, that were brought over 100 years ago and installed in that memorial tower as a gift from the town of Hingham on one of our many centennial anniversaries. So given that it's a small population of people who should be exempted from having Chief Perino show up and ask them what they're doing, that small group of people is using a wonderful town asset, and it's part of the character of the town, and hearing those bells at parades and other special town occasions, I think is something we should try and preserve. So I would like to make a motion to amend Paragraph 8 to read, "Change ringing, or the chiming of bells, chimes, or carolions, or their amplified, recorded, or other electronic substitution."
If you'd be kind enough, you're going to have to write that out.
Absolutely. Between the hours of 7:00 a.m.
You're going to have to bring it forward.
Okay. At 9:00 p.m., I'd like to strike the sentence while being used in conjunction with religious services or to time intervals, because change bell ringing has nothing to do with those two activities.
So if you have a written motion you'd like to make, please bring it forward.
Sure. Thank you. And I would very much appreciate a second.
First, you're going to have to make the motion. If Mr. Coughlin, Town Council, can assist you if you need any technical assistance, then once it's written out, you can bring it to me and I'll read it. And invite a second. You can get up and speak to it responsibly. We have to deal with this first.
Bruce Rabuffo, Chairman of the Board of Selectmen, One Dragon's Path.
Bruce, I'm sorry if I misled you. We have to deal with this first. We have to deal first with the motion to amend.
All right. I take back who I am.
If anyone else would like to identify him or herself during this break, please feel free. Thank you. Well, I have been presented with a proposed motion that would modify Section 8A, subsection 8 of the recommended motion, and it would substitute in its entirety for what is set forth in the recommended motion, the following. Change ringing, or the chiming of bells, chimes, or carolons. As you can see, it more or less parallels what's there, but, or their amplified, or their amplified, comma, recorded, or other electronic substitutions between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m. So let me see if I can simplify that for us a bit. So before the typed bells, chimes, or carolons, you would insert, "Change ringing, or the chiming of," and then it would continue, "Bells, chimes, or carolons, or their amplified, recorded, or other electronic substitutions," and then it would strike, "while being used in conjunction with religious services," or to denote time intervals, and then you would continue on with the previous language, "between the hours of 7:00 and 9:00." So just again, for clarification, I'll read it. "Change ringing, or the chiming of bells, chimes, or carolons, or their amplified, recorded, or other electronic substitutions between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 p.m." Now, is there a second on this motion to amend?
Second.
Second. So it's been duly made and seconded, and it's now open for debate.
I am Bruce Rabuffo. I'm going to relinquish some of my time, Mr. Moderator, to the Advisory Committee, Michael Barclay, who has other information to share. The Board of Selectmen have a permit process that permits this, the issue that has been raised tonight. As you know, in our permitting process, there are occasions where events take place, might be outside of a particular practice or rule, and we have exceptions to that rule, and the Board of Selectmen in this instance exercises that exception for the carillon ringing. I'd like to relinquish the floor with your permission, Mr. Moderator, to Mr. Barclay.
Mr. Barclay, you can have your own time.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mike Barclay, 11 Cottage Street. One thing I wanted to address was the Mass General Statute, which has been brought up, and frankly, it's little apples and oranges. I'll read you a little bit out of this. This is a DEP, this is something that's monitored by the DEP for air pollution, and I'll just read you one paragraph from it. "The DEP has established a noise level policy for implementing this regulation. The policy specifies that the ambient sound level measured at the property line of the facility or at the nearest inhabited buildings shall not be increased by more than 10 decibels weighted for the A scale due to the sound from the facility during the operating hours." So that Mass Statute includes the decibels. We didn't want to include the decibels. So, I mean, in our opinion, if you want decibels in it, then you can think about the Mass Statute, but we did not want decibels as part of our local bylaw. Again, you know, a lot of the things that can happen, you know, the police have the opportunity to respond to any complaint. They're not looking to issue fines for the sake of issuing fines. I think if you talked to the chief, he would say that, you know, his officers are going to continue to operate the way they have in that, you know, they're going to show up and they're going to give you a warning. And if they've got to come back, then they're going to issue a fine. And yes, there were a lot of noise complaints in a two-year period. The, you know, this, they don't want to arrest people, and I believe there were actually some arrests that came out of that, and that's one of the things that the chief definitely doesn't want to do. So, you know, again, can't say that anything that's going to come before you can anticipate every single future eventuality that might come. If you can really predict anything that's been passed on this floor and say with 100% certainty that you can predict the future of it, you know, I'd love to hear that, but...
Give a minute.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. But just to be very clear again, this topic has been the subject of a lot of public debate. You can go to the town's website and pull up the various meetings, the selectmen's meetings, when this issue was brought up and discussed. It has been out there in the public, the draft has been there since January, and we have, you know, we have asked and hoped for any feedback that we would get from you, and we've taken all the feedback that's been given to us. What you have in front of you is a result of that feedback. We're trying to give the police some definite tools to deal with a couple of issues that have been problems for them, and we've gone to great lengths to make sure that this doesn't overreach. I don't want my backyard barbecue's busted up either. We've gone through great lengths to make sure that this doesn't overreach and infringe on your rights as citizens and as somebody brought up. If a year from now, people don't like it, we can amend it. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am.
Susan Haley, 24 Fairview Street. I just want to say that I'm going to vote no on this because I have some issues with the exemptions and permits. For example, the South Shore Country Club. I have walked from my home to the train station.
Just a point of clarification, we're focused right now on the proposed amendment?
Okay, I'm sorry.
It's okay. Do you want to speak to the proposed amendment?
No.
Before us, okay. Then why don't you hold? Is there further discussion on the proposed amendment that is before us? If not, we come to vote on it.
My name is Andy McElany, 26 Myers Farm Road. With regard to the proposed amendment, I'm concerned that it provides an exemption that is much broader than anybody really would be happy with. As 8A8 reads now, it provides a specific exemption for certain uses of bells and chimes and the hourly ringing of certain clocks. That's not to say that any other use of bells or chimes, or what I would have thought were carolions, but he knows music more than I, so if he says carolions, that's what they This doesn't say that ringing bells during other hours is a violation of the statute. It provides simply a specific exemption for the use of bells and chimes in connection with religious services, which in fact may be a First Amendment right in any event. But beyond that, although this is exempted, it doesn't mean using those items in other hours is a violation of the noise ordinance. If you broaden the exemption to say the use is specifically exempted in all hours except 9 to 7, the problem is, you don't know who is going to be ringing bells, where, and for what purpose. That has nothing to do with music. So I would say that the amendment is unnecessary and quite frankly, works more mischief than is called for. Those of us who don't have wives here would think that the 13 hours that we're permitted to use, lawn mowers, of course, is much too great, and that that should be abbreviated considerably, but that's for another day.
Thank you. That will be recorded for posterity on the record. Any further discussion on the proposed amendment? If not, we come to vote on the proposed amendment, which requires for adoption of majority? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
Motion is lost. Is there any further discussion on the main motion, which now reverts to the recommendation with respect to 8A8 as set forth in the recommended motion of advisory? Yes?
I just wanted to continue that I have been persuaded by those that have urged a no vote. I do think that I've walked from my home to the train station so that my husband can get on the 6:00 a.m. train. I've seen the workers at the South Shore Country Club at work well before the first train goes through, and I just think that if they're allowed to work, it's an asset for the town, that it's very subjective. I agree with the speakers that have come before, and I also want to make the point that the transfer station is open at 7:00 a.m. And if you're, and you want to get there early, it's very subjective. I think it's just being a good neighbor. And I agree with the previous speaker that had said that, oh, verbal warning. So I don't, I urge a no vote on this. Thank you.
Any further discussion before we come to vote? Mrs. Falvey.
Good evening. Carol Falvey, 169 Stainer Drive. I think we all agree that we want to support our police and their efforts. We want to give them the tools that they need to keep our community safe. We've talked about body art, we've talked about church bells, covering a lot of bases tonight, and I think this is a very complicated amendment or action that we're taking tonight. And I would suggest, and I don't know, Mr. Moderator, it's a suggestion, can we refer this back to committee at this point? The Sound Committee has agreed to stay together for another year. I really think they need to refine this a little bit more. I mean, I really don't feel we need to talk about church bells and lawn mowers. It's really about the construction, what I've been hearing in the landscaping, and I really think that some more work needs to be done on this article.
A motion could be made, Mrs. Falvey, to refer this to a committee. It's not unlike what we talked about last evening. A motion to commit or refer would require a second and a majority vote, would require, or at least is open to debate, an amendment. So if you wanted to make a motion to refer to a committee, it typically would require committing it for further study and a report to the next annual meeting.
Then I would like to make a motion to refer this to committee.
Been duly made and seconded. It is now open for debate. So as we explained last night, a motion to commit or to refer essentially defers action on the matter before the meeting, and would be essentially something that would be considered further by presuming that the motion to refer is to the same committee, Mrs. Falvey, to the charge committee, not to a newly formed committee, to refer it for further study, to report presumably at the next annual town meeting. So we will now move to debate the motion to commit or refer, which has been duly made and seconded, and is now before the meeting.
Hi, Judy Sneath, 89 North Street. I would disagree that this needs to go back to a committee. It has been in a committee for over a year, has been well-publicized. They have been incredibly open to input from everybody here. I think if they did one thing wrong, it was not to go through the article tonight, Section 6 and 7, which really are the crux of what this article does. And so it allowed people to stand up and say, "Well, if," sorry, Sue, "if my sump pump needs to go on, it can't go on." It can, because there's an exemption for emergency work. There are, you know, if Jerry wants to use his domestic power tools in the basement and nobody hears it, nobody's going to complain. So it wouldn't clearly be prohibited. So I think that if you go through Section 6 and 7, line by line, I actually agree with Mr., somebody who spoke earlier, who said, you know, maybe these hours aren't enough. Like, I really don't want, you know, and this happened on Memorial Day, all the trees in the lot behind me removed, and you can still do that. You can still come and take down trees all day on Memorial Day. So I think this is a great start, actually, to seeing how this works. And then when we want to stop allowing commercial landscaping activity on Sundays, we can take that next step. If we want to limit leaf blowers to times when there are actually leaves on the ground, we could try to do... we could try to do that. I think this article actually puts us, it advances us as a town to having real conversation about allowable noise. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the motion to commit? Yes, sir.
Michael Vaughn, 52 Union Street. I'm in favor of the bylaw, and I believe a considerable amount of work has already been done. A considerable amount of thought has already been taken in putting together the bylaw. And I believe it's a useful tool for our police going forward, and I see no reason why it should be sent back to committee. Thank you.
Is there further discussion on the motion to commit or refer? Yes, in the back of the hall.
Paula Mine, 36 Volusia Road. In regards to if this went back to committee to be studied, I was wondering if there was anything that they might put in just to limit the times of construction. That seems to be a big problem, that there is no specific time for start and stop of construction, and why that wasn't addressed as one of the major problems, and maybe that would eliminate a lot of the issues that we have. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Healy?
Paul Healy, 209 Main Street. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I listened to my former partner, who's now the chief of police, describing to you the challenges that the department faces on this issue. What may seem to you to be a nuisance or an exercise of your rights to make noise has a greater impact on the resources that this town has. I worked the midnight to eight shift for 11 years. Getting a call at 6:00 AM for a loud dog barking, dumpsters, contractors starting up may seem trivial, but somebody's peace was disturbed there. Certainly wasn't the police. We don't respond on our own initiative to something like that. We're sent there. I default back to "we" because that problem evidently continues even today. I've been off the force for over 20 years. In our work on the planning board, when we issued permits, we typically would have conditions limiting the time that people could start. This is about resources. This is about fairness. Mr. White talked about, well, hey, why not give them a warning? Well, of course we give them a warning. The police aren't in the business of bringing people in just to jump their numbers. That's not what this is about. This is about conserving the resources of this town. You charge somebody with disturbing the peace. I thought the noise bylaw committee did a pretty good job on that. That's the yardstick. You have to go to court. You have to pay officers. You have to pay a booking officer. You have to pay the charging officer. There's certain hourly minimums. Those are all costs that go into the police budget. That's called overtime. That is an expenditure of monies that you really want to do on a disturbing the peace. This gives you, this gives the town, this gives the department, this gives our budgetary resources, an option. It's a hundred dollar fine. The hundred dollar fine isn't going to be imposed, I'm sure, until they've been told several times. Enough, enough. The chronic nature of certain calls, that's probably associated with construction. We're dealing in a period where we are contending with growth. It's overlapping and lapping up onto the residential districts, especially in the more densely populated areas of town. This is a reasonable step. The irritation that the gentleman from Beulah Road spoke to is palpable. If the police are going to repeatedly speak to somebody who's picking up or dropping off a dumpster, and, you know, they're called there a week later and it's a different guy, are they really going to be charging that person? No. This was a bylaw that evolved. The whole issue of decibels quickly became apparent wasn't going to fly. So we thought about this, the Board of Selectmen, Advisory Committee. The unanimity of it suggests to you that this isn't something that's hastily decided, hastily drafted. There is a need for it. It existed 30 years ago. It exists today. I urge you to vote and support this bylaw. Thank you.
Is there further discussion on the motion to commit or refer? Yes, Mr. King.
Dennis King for East Gateway. With respect to this particular motion, I just want to make clear that the committee agreed, because no regulation is perfect, the committee agreed to stay together for a year in order to monitor its implementation if it were passed and to recommend any amendments to the bylaw that might, with time, make sense to make. So I guess my point is that if this bylaw is not adopted, the committee has not agreed just to study it again for another year. The other thing I want to say with respect to warnings, a gentleman earlier suggested that we have mandatory warnings for a first response to a noise complaint. I want you to think about that for a minute. Every high school kid in town knows when the police show up, can't even write you a ticket the first time. We didn't want to put the police department in that position. And so we included the following sentence in Section 4B, which deals with the penalties. Nothing contained in this subsection shall prohibit an enforcement official, which is police officer, building inspector, or executive health director, from giving a warning and rule of the fine if in the official's discretion a warning is appropriate under the circumstances. So on this particular motion, I personally am opposed to it.
Any further discussion on the motion to commit? Yes?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Gail Faring, 14 Cross Street. Just a point of clarification on item number D, Section 7. The hours for the dumpster and trash removal at 7:00 PM to 6:59 AM the following day on weekdays or between the hours of 8:00 PM and 7:59 AM on the following day. Should that 7:59 and the 6:59 be the same time?
Yes. Is there a committee member who wishes to respond to that question?
Thank you.
Yes.
Once again, Dennis King for East Gateway. We added another hour on weekends purposely so that people could get an extra hour's sleep on a weekend when they don't have to get up and go to work. But that was intentional.
So the matter before the meeting is Mrs. Falvey's motion to commit, which essentially would return this matter to committee for another year to report at next year's annual town meeting. That requires for its adoption of majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
If the noes have it, the motion is lost. If there is not further discussion, we would then come to vote on the main motion before the meeting. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no?
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. We now move on to Article 30. Article 30 asks whether the town will approve the filing of an application with the interagency permitting board for the designation of land included in the South Shore Park. The comment makes clear the purpose here, which is to allow designation of certain land as a priority development site. The last paragraph of the comment directly before the recommended motion says it was determined at the time of the original warrant article, which goes back to 2012, that some properties within the SSP, the South Shore Park, were erroneously omitted. This article would include those properties and enable the town to move forward with its final application for 43D status. The recommended motion of advisory is a positive motion. It is the main motion before the meeting. Is there discussion? If none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article 31. Article 31 asks whether the town will authorize but not require the Board of Selectmen to petition the legislature to enact special legislation to allow the town to create a reserve, trust, or stabilization fund or other funding mechanism for the purpose of defraying unanticipated or unbudgeted special education expenses or to act on anything related thereto. Directly above the recommended motion, you see that both the Board of Selectmen and Advisory Committee have voted unanimously in favor of this article, and the School Committee has voted six to one in favor of the article. The recommended motion of advisory is affirmative. It is the main motion before the meeting. Is there discussion? If there is none, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article 32. Article 32 asks whether the town will authorize the Board of Selectmen to acquire from 302-304 Whiting Street Limited Partnership for Public Safety Purposes for nominal consideration certain land consisting of 41,287 square feet or to act on anything related thereto. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is to authorize the town to authorize the Selectmen but not require them to acquire this parcel for any municipal purpose on such terms and conditions and subject to restrictions on use as the Selectmen may deem in the town's best interest, and to authorize the Selectmen to transfer the care, custody, and management and control of the parcel to the Hingham Affordable Housing Trust for the purpose of leasing or selling the parcel and the home thereon as an affordable housing unit which shall be deed restricted for such use for affordable housing in perpetuity. As this involves a transfer of land, it requires for adoption a two-thirds vote. Is there discussion? If not, we come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It is a unanimous vote. Article 33 asks whether the town will vote to amend the general bylaw of the town to modify rules and regulations governing the use of conservation land in Hingham. The comment is helpful. It says in its initial language, "Based on its authority under state law, the Conservation Commission permitted bow hunting of turkey and deer on town conservation land from 2006 through 2013. The Commission rescinded hunting on conservation land in 2014 when it became aware that the town bylaw prohibited hunting. This article would amend the bylaw to authorize the Conservation Commission to create policies and regulations to allow bow hunting. The article was initiated by citizens but has the support of the Conservation Committee." Directly before the recommended motion, you see that the Conservation Commission affirmed its support of the article at its January 13, 2014, meeting, and the Board of Selectmen voted unanimously in support of the article as well. Is there discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Gall.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. My name is Frank Gall. I live at 248 Central Street with my wife and two boys. I'm in sales, so I always try to stick to the two B rules, be brief and begone, as we've all been here for a while. You have your consideration in the warrant, a comment from the Advisory Committee. I will now provide some additional context through seven brief points. First, warrant 33 is the end product of the efforts of several others aside from my own, including fellow Hingham resident David Horton, as well as the Conservation Commission, Selectmen, and Advisory Committee. I thank them for all their efforts and counsel in this process. Second, the purpose of warrant Article 33 is to have town meeting amend the relevant town bylaws to allow for the continued in-seasoned hunting of whitetail deer by bow and arrow only on select town conservation land as deemed appropriate by the Conservation Commission. Third, bow hunting activity has been sanctioned by the Conservation without incidents since 2006. However, in early January 2014, as the moderator pointed out, following the close of the 2013 bow season, it was brought to the Commission's attention that the wording in the town's bylaws, Article 30, Section 10, and Article 10, Section 9, which had been adopted in 1939, 75 years ago, in effect precluded hunting of any kind on town conservation property. The Commission then acted prudently by quickly notifying deer hunting participants that deer hunting program would be suspended for 2014 pending resolution of this limitation. The Commission again acted prudently by placing the onus for initiating town meeting action to allow for the reinstatement of the program upon the resident bow hunting community. Although time was short to get an article to this year's warrant, Dave Horton and I immediately drafted and submitted a warrant article for the warrant deadline. That article, with appropriate fine-tuning revision, is that which is before you this evening. Fourth, this article has been vetted and unanimously supported by the Conservation Committee, the Board of Selectmen, and has been recommended for approval by the Advisory Committee. Fifth, if this warrant article is approved this evening, then it will mandate the Conservation Commission work closely with both the hunting and non-hunting community in an open public forum to formulate and implement rules and regulations in time for the commencement of the bow hunting season on October 20th of this year. Sixth, deer overpopulation is a serious issue in Hingham as it is for many South Shore communities, primarily arising out of lack of natural controls. The overpopulation results in several indisputable and detrimental effects. A rash of costly motor vehicle collisions during mating season, the proliferation of deer tick-borne Lyme disease, and the overbrowsing and destruction of expensive properties within Hingham and other communities. Seventh and last, and I will be gone. The bow hunting program has been the only available population management tool for the whitetail deer in Hingham. And since the program's inception in 2006, there have been no reported safety incidents or accidents related to bow hunting. That being said, I respectfully ask town meeting to approve warrant Article 33. I appreciate the opportunity to speak about this in front of you. I thank you and have a good evening.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on the proposed motion under Article 33? If not, we come to vote. It requires for adoption of majority. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no.
No.
The ayes have it. The motion is adopted. Article 34. Article 34 asks that the town authorize but not require the Selectmen to accept certain grants of easements under Massachusetts town meeting approval, under Massachusetts law, rather. Town meeting approval is required for the Board of Selectmen to accept such easements. This is an article that we see each year. The proposed motion, of course, is affirmative to authorize the town to require, to authorize but not require the Selectmen to accept the easements. Requires for adoption of majority vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Article 35. Article 35 requires a four-fifth majority. Article 35 asks whether the town will raise and appropriate a sum of money for an unpaid bill for a previous year to Tetra Tech. Tetra Tech, $10,898.68. Is there discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Hersi.
My name is John Hersi. I live at 65 Hersi Street. I've lived there, on Hersi Street, for 65 years. I know about this property because I live next to the DPW. I since moved up the street. The DPW took this property from my family from Indian Domain, 2008. It was a polluted piece of property. You people should realize now that all the hazardous waste from that property flows into the South Shore Country Club land, and it goes down the town brook. the Social Economy Club land, and it goes down the town Brooklyn into the harbor. I'm very saddened about this. The town created the problem because they blew the property. It's documented. And I'm very sad to say that we need to pay the bill, because every five years, there has to be an assessment on that property.
Mr. Hersi, just one point.
Yeah.
Are we talking, we're talking about 35 right now?
Yeah.
That relates to this bill?
Yeah, oh, okay, fine. I suggested you pay it, and I understand, yes. But going forward, the DPW still pollutes where they are today. I approve of that. Thank you very much.
Excellent. Thank you. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is that this bill be paid, and we now come to vote. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. We now come to article 36. Article 36 asks whether the town will transfer a sum of money from receipts reserved for appropriation, insurance recovery in excess of $20,000. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is set forth. It is the affirmative motion. It speaks for itself. Is there discussion? Yes, sir. Mr. Hersi. Article 36.
Yes. My name is John Hersi. What does this insurance, what is this for? What happened? Why are we appropriating this money?
Mr. Sharkansky from the Advisory Committee.
The law stipulates that any insurance amounts counted over $20,000 need to be voted on by the town in order to be brought into the general fund, and then from there given to the appropriate parties. This past year, there were amounts given in insurance proceeds because of issues with the high school, with the junior high school, the middle school, as well as other areas. And it's just a procedural matter that how the town accepts those funds.
Does it specify for a vehicle? Does it specify for a vehicle? Was?
There was a dump truck with a DPW that was total, lost its rear axle, and the funds from that, from the proceeds from those were given to the town. They go into a general fund.
Yeah, I understand that issue. I understand that, because I was there when that happened. Yeah, that should have never happened. That's just shoddy mechanic, mechanics. We have five mechanics in this town. That should never happen. Your rear axle falls off a sanding truck. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We now come to vote on the recommended motion of the Advisory Committee under article 36. It requires for adoption a majority vote. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. It's a unanimous vote. We now come to the last article on this year's warrant, article 37. Article 37 relates to the laying out as a town way of a certain way. The recommended motion of the Advisory Committee is contained in its supplement, and you see there it is an affirmative motion that the town consent to the taking or use as a public way of portions of Bear Cove Drive. All this is particularly set forth in the motion of the Advisory Committee. This requires for adoption a two-thirds vote. Is there discussion? Mr. Hersi.
Yes. This road is not acceptable to town standards. I want you people to realize that. The people on Hillside Terrace have a swamp in their backyard, and it never swamped it before like it does today. There was a minimal swamp there. Now it's gotten very large, because when they built the road, it wasn't constructed right. Also, it wasn't pitched right down to, across from the skateboard park. This was not built right. It shouldn't go into the swamp. It's supposed to be go, reflect, reflected away from the swamp in a catch basin and go into the retention pond. This has got to be corrected, and it will be corrected. You people have an opportunity. Back in 2008, a very good friend of mine offered the plans to the people that were building the road, and they refused it. And now I'm, I have the plans, and it's not constructed correctly, but it will be in time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there any further discussion before we come to vote? As I said, this requires for adoption a two-thirds majority. All those in favor of the recommended motion under article 37, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, no. Now that, of course, concludes the business of the 2014 Hingham Annual Town Meeting. Before we begin, however, I would like to invite our outgoing chairman of our Board of Selectmen, Bruce Rabuffo, to make the motion to dissolve the meeting. But before Bruce does so, I would like to invite all of you to show your appreciation to Mr. Rabuffo, who is completing six years of service on our Board of Selectmen. And Bruce, I would invite you to make a motion to dissolve the 2014 Hingham Town Meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? It's a unanimous motion. And tomorrow, apparently, is Mr. Rabuffo's birthday.